Fifty six.
Six.
We have a motion to accept the minutes from our last meeting.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the meeting dated.
On the 14th.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, 2020.
In the second. Is there any additions or corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. We'll start the hearing in two minutes.
Huh, in two minutes?
Yeah.
I got two minutes, all right.
Is your clock still in the paint yet?
Seven fifty-nine.
Tick tock. Come on up.
Closing up.
Are you sure you're talking about the hearing?
Yes, please.
This is the hearing?
Yeah.
I didn't know how to prepare, so I thought if I took the plan.
I want to advise all in attendance that you may be, your voice and image may be recorded for posterity. Whether you want it to happen or not. Okay.
We haven't figured out the appropriate.
June.
Yes.
Have a seat.
Here. Hi, good evening.
And if, did you come specifically for the hearing?
Yes.
If you specifically came for this hearing, there's so few of you, come on up.
Oh, good. That makes it nice and easier.
Yeah, because I don't think everybody is necessarily here for this, but those that are might as well come up and join us. Why not? So, under the Scenic Roads Act, we're required to hold a public hearing, so we'll call the public hearing to order at eight o'clock. And every time there's a modification to a stone wall or a removal of a shade tree, the planning board in our particular town is required to hold a public hearing. I'll be honest and say that we've held public hearings for shade trees and stone walls when they were significant, but under previous building inspectors, we never did this. But I think technically, we probably should have. And what we're going to try to do in the future is make some modifications, so perhaps it can be included in the selectmen's curb cut permit process, just to simplify it for folks, so they don't have to appear before us too. But, thank you for accommodating us. So, go ahead.
Well, I'm here tonight to, to seek approval to get a 12-foot wide opening in the stone wall, so that we can put a driveway, actually a connecting driveway into the existing driveway at 169 Lyman Road. And I was here last summer when we created that previous A and R, so because we shifted the lot lines, and that's why we need to
Where is this now?
Excuse me?
Where is it?
Lyman Road.
It's not, it's close to the school bus turnaround, Northborough, Row and Town Line.
Is it near where the little pond is out back?
Is that behind Pierce? There's, is there some water there? I don't really know.
So, this is on the Pisgah side.
Yes.
It's on the Pisgah side of Lyman, almost near the Northborough line, you can see there.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
There's a pond over in there.
The one behind Pierce's house?
Must be.
Okay, yeah, this is close.
Yeah.
Close to that.
So, we did the A and R plan last year to avoid a common drive situation on lots two and three on this plan. And we didn't realize until we came in to get a driveway, when we filed for a driveway application, to put in the, because this 169 driveway was on Lot 2A before.
It is.
It is, right now. We have to correct that and have its own driveway coming in on 169. And we didn't realize that the stone wall was an issue until we applied for the driveway permit. And because of that, that's why we're here tonight, so we're looking to, to get about 12 feet wide. Move the stones, we plan to keep them on-site and.
No trees involved?
There's no trees on the public way, and I think they're small. You can see by the pictures here, they're
Minimal.
So, the, am I going to affect the microphone?
Yeah, go ahead, don't worry about it.
Okay. So, there's Lyman Road in the foreground, the three stakes, one's in the middle and then six feet either side, so it's a 12 feet.
Good.
And these are the trees on the, on the 169 property.
Yep. So, will you simply move, move stones? You don't, you're not planning on restoring or building up the wall as it exists, or it's going to terminate on both sides? Or are you going to?
There's not much of a stone wall there, but I thought what we would do with the stones is that we would try to fill in or
Yeah.
increase the stone wall that's there right now.
Yep.
I don't know how many stones are there, but we would just, we would keep them there.
That's the shortest distance of lugging.
Any questions from the board? Are you in a butter?
No.
Are you a potential?
No, I'm actually the real estate agent selling it for them.
Okay, good. Any questions from the crowd? Do you want to get a shot of the crowd?
No.
Does anyone have, no further questions then?
No.
No, pretty cut and dry.
And you don't have anything else to add?
No, only that we, we want to avoid needing to do a common driveway for this, because that's why we went through this whole exercise.
Well, and the way our bylaws read, you'd have to, we want people to overcome the presumption that every lot ought to be served by a, by their own driveway. So, what you're doing is what, you know, our goal is ultimately, is to have lots served by a driveway. So, do we have a motion to close the hearing?
I make a motion to close the hearing.
And, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so we've closed the hearing at, I mean, eight oh five, I guess. And now we can take some action on this, if you'd like to. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve?
You're telling me we're going to say?
It's interesting to see what the action is. I suppose we're going to recommend to the building inspector and the selectmen that they approve the curb cut, and that the planning board has no objections to the curb cut based on the Scenic Roads Act. I would assume that that would be satisfactory.
I think they have to report the number of stones they've moved.
Yeah, something like that.
So, according to the, to the laws, and I'm no expert here, it just says that prior to paving work or, or whatever
Right.
shall not be done without prior written consent of the planning board.
So, in the, and you don't have a curb cut yet, permit from the selectmen.
From the selectmen, we just applied to the building inspector.
Who sent her here.
So, what we're going to do is, we'll send a letter to the selectmen and the building inspector saying that we've approved
Approve it.
You know, your We'll find some.
Removal of 12 stones.
We'll sign, because they're going to issue the curb cut.
Right.
And I think what triggered it was the Did you? Yeah, did you ask for a curb cut?
I filled out the, the application, I don't have that with, I just have the letter from the building inspector.
So, that's what triggered it, because then the building inspector said, oh, we have a Scenic Roads Act, and as a result, we've got to go through this process. So, they won't issue you a curb cut till they get some from us. So, we'll send them a note that says.
Would you, did you want to copy this? He said he noticed there was a stone wall in front, and that's why he, we went through this part.
Yeah.
Does it also need to be approved by the board of selectmen?
So, the selectmen issue curb cuts.
Okay.
And, and the curb cut is how you access a lot. So, what happened was you, you go to the building inspector, you say, you know, I need to create a driveway, he says, okay, you have to get a curb cut. They don't hold a, and, and there's not a noticed hearing for the curb cut.
I don't believe.
But you end up filing a permit with them, and, and they speak with highway and police and everybody else, and just get confirmation that no one has an objection from a public safety point of view. But because the Scenic Road Act exists, you know, there also has to be this stop along the way.
So, for a timeframe for that approval process for the board of selectmen, is that just a matter of a couple of weeks?
Yeah, because they don't have to notify in the newspaper like we did, the way I understand it. I don't think the selectmen.
Can you sign on there that you approve and have all three of you signing, and I can show it to Margaret?
Yeah, we could do that.
Sure.
Yeah, they have a closing at the end of the month, not this month, next month.
Or paving work done with respect there, too, shall not involve or include the cutting or removal of trees, or tearing down destruction of walls or portions thereof, except with the prior written consent of the planning board. So, we can say the planning board issues its consent that the, you know, the driveway be allowed, following a public hearing held on and such. So, we can write this on this, give it to Eloise, she can make copies and give it to the building inspector and the selectmen. And then when you ask for the permit for the curb cut, they'll have this in hand.
I wonder if they'll now act on the application I gave them.
I would think they might very well just do that.
Yeah.
You could call them and say.
Right, it might not hurt to.
Yeah, to follow up.
Doesn't fault where the cracks.
Good.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
We did vote, didn't we?
We voted to accept the, we voted to close the hearing. We should vote, I make a motion.
And you made a, you made a motion and she, yeah.
And Janet seconded it.
And so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, thank you.
Thanks again.
Yeah, you've, you've stimulated us to take some action on this, because we hadn't paid much attention to it for a long time. Eight thirty, is that what I said?
Yes.
Okay, so let's do that.
Do you have an A and R between?
I do, so no one's here for an A and R for Lyman Road? Ron thought he had a Lyman Road A and R for, for a lot. So, why don't we give Onella five minutes, and then we'll cover a few other things real quick, and we'll do you at eight thirty like we've got on the schedule, and.
Yeah, Kathy's not quite here yet, she said she'd be here on eight fifty.
Okay, good. Onella, come on up and tell us.
I hoped Margaret would be here, but I'm sure you guys can talk to her about this offline, Margaret.
Here, this was sent to us. All right.
I need to get my email in front of me.
So, the number right now is, is triggered by
Oh, thank you.
Package stores, liquor license. Package store.
It's vague, like everything else is in the guidelines, it's just liquor licenses. So, I'm assuming it's the total number.
It'll be a lot.
It's ridiculous, we have 14 liquor licenses in this town. Wow. It's a tiny town to have 14 liquor licenses, it's kind of shocking. So, given that, the minimum number, right, is regulated, right? So, we, we're required, I don't require to have it, but required at least to entertain 2.8. Right? So, given that number, you can actually set your maximum to the minimum, if you so choose. Various towns have done a lot of different things, but, you know, it, it's definitely prudent. It's, for many towns, it's a drain on the resources to continually entertain the establishments that do want to come in, helps you against liability.
Is that defined as anything? Retail?
Yes.
Just retail?
No, anything.
Anything?
Yeah, it's, it's
Marijuana establishments.
Anything to do with marijuana, so it could be research, it could be.
Whatever requires a license by the state. Yeah. Right? So, you know, I, I just thought it definitely required a conversation and some thought. So, I wanted to start that.
Can you put in language that says, we're going to, we're going to limit the number of marijuana establishments to X, which is within that threshold, and then put additional language in that says, and no more than X will be retail? As a subset?
Again, this, that's probably something you'll have to ask town council.
I mean, people might, people might be more interested in restricting retail than.
Yeah, that was my first inclination.
And they might be willing to say, you know,
If you were to do.
Five total establishments, but no more than two retail, or something like that.
Well, could be, but we do need to consider that cultivation facilities have quite a drain on your local resources, they have a, quite an effect on the ecology and the environment. So, I think that's something we need to look at, but yeah.
Yeah, but I was trying to figure out, if you're going to go to town meeting, you want to get it, you want it to pass.
Yeah, well, well, Marg, I had, I spoke with Margaret, and she's Margaret? Our town administrator, and she has offered to check out, you know, check with her colleagues and see what some of the language is, because, you know, the warrant closes in two weeks. But I actually, you know, someone sent me Harvard limits, limits theirs, and a friend of mine sent me that, I wonder if I can pull it up real quick, she sent me the language. I haven't had a chance to look at it, but, let me just see. I won't be able to find it now, of course, probably. Oh, Harvard marijuana article. Okay. Amendment, marijuana establishment, marijuana cultivator, independent, testing lab, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related business, including but not limited to medical marijuana treatment center, medical social consumption establishment, whether mixed use or with a primary use of marijuana consumption. Place, sorry about this, I, this is the first time I'm reading it. So, I see what they did, some marijuana establishment in such and such a district, authorized by the planning board, has one, shall not be sighted within a radius of 500 feet of a public or private school. Two, goes on to talk about other things, let me see if I get Sorry. Where do they do this? Okay, this is way too long. I'll send it to you, and, and maybe you can take a look through it, I'll look at it too, and I can also send it to Margaret. But I know, like, Fitchburg has limited, so you can look at, I mean, they've limited to eight cultivation facilities, but they're a larger city. But, you know, before we went into this and picked numbers and all that, I thought, you know, it, it would be prudent to, I know it's a very short period of time, but to really look into what the, what our town can sustain, and reasons why, so that at town meeting, and maybe that's something we do between the, we know, the, the warrant closing and the town meeting, but really better understand it, so that when we do present it at town meeting, there's some strong arguments for it. I also, the other question is, and this is vague, the guidance documents are very vague on this, whether or not it needs to be a zoning by law amendment, or a general by law amendment.
Margaret will figure that out.
I, I think the strongest language would be zo, you know, zoning would probably be the strongest. You know, again, the laws are, it's so vague, the guidelines, all it says is It says, uh, sorry. So, number.
By default.
Yes.
Wouldn't it be sort of self-regulated by what can be allowed and what zone? I mean, we've pretty much local, you know, localized it, so that it can only happen in certain zones, and that there's not unlimited zones that it can happen in. So, I mean, it's sort of self-regulating. I understand, you know, you put a line in the sand, and now that's established, however, it's not like it's carte blanche.
I mean, I, I can't really answer that question.
No, I'm asking you to consider that.
Yeah. I guess it's possible, but is it in the best interest of the town? And I think that that's something we need to, to look at.
I think that, you know, I mean, we took that interest in, to consideration when we crafted the language we did.
You can have multi-floor facilities with, you know, multiple types of establishments, and
But the practicalities of creating multi-story buildings in town with the limitations of the water in the sewer, sort of, again, self-regulates it.
Yeah.
It's not like we have, you know, high rises that are going to be put in.
I think part of this is really to, to help, it, it can be taxing on our local government and our resources, and this really helps, I guess it, it helps the town, it helps protect it from any liability if we do choose at some point to not want to entertain a marijuana establishment coming in, perhaps there's other things going on in town, we just don't have the resources at the time. And it's, it's a bit of protection, if you'd like to call it that, if it's in our bylaws. So, I mean, they can be changed at any time, if, if we find that it's not helpful to the town, but I think initially, it's, it's always best to have a more restrictive policy, and then move to less restrictive. That's why many towns are doing it. And again, I'll always go back to what is our real understanding of, of the effect on our ecology and our environment, so.
So, we can, I mean, if, you sent it to Margaret, and you've had a conversation with her, so we'll, we can tell her that, you know, if she wants to communicate with us about it, or come to our next meeting.
Well, here's the timely nature of it, you probably already figured it out.
Yeah, but I mean, she, we, we can act at that next meeting.
Okay, so it's the day the warrant closes, though, right? Okay. So, right, it poses a little bit of a, of a, an issue for me, because if, if the planning board decides that, you know, they vote to not move forward with that.
Well, the selectmen can move forward with it. If Margaret, if, if you get, you know, to, if you talk to Margaret, the selectmen and Margaret can put an article on the warrant, doesn't have to be from the planning board.
Right. Right. But you really won't know what you're doing before your next, so I, I'm, I guess I'm a little bit confused.
Well, the other thing too is, you don't have a full board, so to make decisions predicated on, we need to make a decision by next meeting.
We don't, we don't know fully what we'd do right now, tonight.
I don't, I'm not confident.
Right.
So, we're not going to be able to talk about it with
Right.
much knowledge until next time.
Right.
And then if there's merit, and people agree with that, then, you know, we can, it doesn't seem to me like it's a great deal of text, it's going to be a fairly simple, you know, clause that's going to get popped into the language.
So, just humor me for a minute, though. So, as far as the select board deciding whether or not they want to move forward with it, you won't be able to decide for, until the day the warrant closes?
Right.
And they won't be meeting, probably, or maybe they will, I don't know, but, you know what I'm saying, how do we?
Give us more money.
Do you have a suggestion? What was that?
I'm saying.
Give us more money, and I paid for this.
Go ahead, and, and I would pursue this with the selectmen, because they're going to meet more often than we do before the warrant closes.
But do you think that it's, should be a zoning, can they propose a zoning? I don't know how it's.
It's not zoning, you're tying it to a number that's tied to liquor license issues.
You don't think it needs to be a zoning by law amendment?
I would tie it to zoning.
I don't know, it, it seems like it's a, it's, it's just a stipulation.
It's a, it's a quantity, it's not an area.
Right.
We've already defined areas.
I mean, it's, I mean, the state defines how many liquor licenses we can have, but the selectmen determine how many they're going to issue. And, and the selectmen are going to be the driving force behind these host agreements and all that sort of stuff. So, if there's a stipulation as, as a vote of the town meeting that says, there's only going to be X number of marijuana establishment licenses issued in the town of Berlin, then it seems like, that doesn't have to be driven by zoning, that Did she raise her hand?
No, I'm, I'm.
I just want to be sure that this isn't something that would not be upheld by the attorney general, you know, we've gotten into this a little bit of a issue before, I just want to make sure we understand.
Yeah, and I'm perfectly willing to talk to Margaret between now and, and then.
Awesome, okay.
And then to come back to the planning board with what we've learned, but I can't guarantee you, I don't think we can guarantee you that we
No.
We'd come up with something in two weeks to try to figure out what other towns have done, what the attorney generals already accepted.
She, she is actually offered to do that.
Can't we amend it at the time of town meeting? Couldn't we amend whatever it is at the time of town meeting?
We could, yeah, as long as you don't make it more restrictive.
Right. But I mean, if, if we came up with a number now and put it in.
It's the writing and the language, and it's giving the rest of the members to.
And then just say, right.
And I think if Margaret's already doing some language, you know,
Yeah.
if she thinks it ought to be driven by the planning board, you know, she can write us a note and say, you know, it ought to be driven by the planning board, here's some thoughts, we can look at it and see if we like it. And then, you know, if she thinks it can be driven by the selectmen, I'd say that's even better. Because they got more time. I mean, they, they're going to meet before.
No, I, I under, I understand, and again, just.
And they can talk about it, you know?
Okay, all right. Well, then, I'll just have some follow-up discussions with Margaret.
Yeah, and I'll chase her down, because I got to talk about some other stuff with her anyway, so.
Okay. Great. All right, well, let me know if there's anything I can do, or if you, is there any information that I can get?
Well, send us what Harvard did.
Yeah, yeah, I'll forward that to you then.
And if you see some others from some other towns as examples, then we can look to see whether they're actually zoning, or whether they're just general by law.
Yeah, that's an excellent idea. Yeah, all right. Sounds good.
Because that'll give us a clue.
All right, all right, great. All right, thank you.
Great.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. There's no one here for Lyman Road A and R. Come on up, kids. Thank you for having us.
So, none of my wacks, but it's state law, how many dispensaries you can have based on the number of your liquor licenses. It's already a state law.
Yeah, but evidently, towns can go further and.
Can go more restrictive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's what Onella was talking about, is whether the town wants to draw that line down tighter.
So, thank you again for having us. I'm Eric Bangsness with WDA Design Group, 31 East Main Street in Westboro. Believe we met a couple of weeks ago, I wasn't here, but I believe Wayne Bellick from our office was here to introduce to you an approval-not-required plan for a piece of property owned by Kane Industrial Trust. Kathy Adams with Kane Industrial is here tonight, Bigelow Road here. This is a piece of property that we've been before you before with, with other configurations, but in this configuration, the idea was to capture some frontage along the cul-de-sac of Bigelow Road, such that the frontage for this new building lot met the town of Hudson minimum requirements for frontage. Such that the frontage for this new building lot met the town of Hudson re- uh, minimum requirements for frontage. Uh, town of Hudson has no minimum lot with requirements here, so that, that satisfied their requirements. The rest of this land is also owned by Kane Industrial and that is, uh, that contains the existing Entwhistle Company. And then here is the town line and the county line here. The remaining portion of the property, which is like twenty-two point seven acres, is in Berlin. Um, so the plan on January seventh was endorsed by Hudson. Uh, to cover this piece, so we're here before you to hopefully get the endorsement. Um, of Berlin Planning Board for the portion in Berlin and I know. Uh, when we were here last, uh, you guys uh wanted to do a little bit more research on your end, so. We are here just to see if you have any follow-up questions.
So, we, I talked to Ross Associates, to, to David and said, you know, and I talked to. Central Mass Regional Planner and I talked to some other attorneys that deal with. Um, zoning and, and they all had concerns, so um, I went to town council, I got permission to go to town council and. Um, she says that the fact that there's no frontage in Berlin. Um, is not an issue. What's, what she says is that. Any, any person wishing to cause to be recorded a plan of land situated in a city or town in which the subdivision control lies in effect. May submit his plan to the planning board of such city, if the board finds the plan does not require such approval, it shall endorse the plan. Approval under subdivision control are not required, so. Therefore, in my opinion, planning board endorsement of an A and R has no bearing on whether the new lots or parcels created by the division. Are lawful under the zoning bylaws of Hudson or Berlin, that is a completely separate issue. In some instances, the planning board may be required by general law, chapter forty-one, to endorse a particular A and R plan. Even when the plan results in the creation of an illegal lot under zoning. Such endorsement, however, does not permit the zoning enforcement officer. Or the building inspector to treat that lot as a legal lot under the zoning if it is not. So, it would be per- preferable, in her opinion, if the Hudson Planning Board acts first, which it did. However, the statutory deadlines must be, I suggest that the endorsement be followed by a text. It would be the following, so that on it we would write, frontage lies entirely in Hudson. And therefore, an endorsement from the Hudson Planning Board is required, which you've got. Additionally, the above endorsement is not a determination of conformance with zoning regulations. Planning Board endorsement under the subdivision control law should not be construed as either an endorsement or an. Approval of the Berlin zoning bylaw dimensional requirements. The problem that you have is that, I think everybody that I've talked to says that. The requirements of Berlin's dimensional requirements for a lot ought to be met. Now, you've met the hundred-foot requirement in Berlin for a backland lot, so you're fine, you've met the, the area requirement, so you're fine. And those are the two things that we look at, so we would sign it, but we would sign it with this language. Because you don't have a hundred feet of width from the frontage to the structure potentially on the site in Berlin. And because that's a dimensional requirement in Berlin, the building inspector may, see that's where, we're just saying. It may not pass muster because you've, you won't, you don't have a hundred feet of width from the frontage. To where you're probably gonna place the structure, so you just need to know that that's the caveat that. This language is thrown on there, so down the road, you may have to come back to us and say. We need to expand the neck to a hundred feet.
Now, is that, I guess what I'm a little confused on, is that. Asserting then that Berlin, the town of Berlin can enforce its dimensional regulations in Hudson?
No, we're enforcing our dimension relation, eh, regulations in Berlin, but what everybody is saying to me, town council and. And the building inspector and Ross and all these others is. It, you can expect that your dimension requirements ought to be met, now. In our case, a hundred feet is easy because we have a hundred-foot backland lot, so you can do that and get away with. Hudson's requirement for a hundred feet of frontage. Um, in acreage, you're fine, it's just that neck issue that potentially could stand in your way.
That width from here to here where it crosses the town line is three hundred and eighty feet.
And you're gonna, I'm just saying, I'll sign the plan. But I'm gonna, I think we need to put that language on it because that's what town council's telling us. And then you can cross that bridge when you get to the next stage, so you may be back to us.
Well, we'd have to come to site plan review anyways if we're gonna do any. That wouldn't be planning board?
No, we, we.
Kinda shuffled it off to this.
We do ZB, we do site plan for overlays and stuff like that and senior residential developments. But the site plan review is ZB, you know, is.
Hey, I have a question and, and it may have been discussed when I wasn't here at some point, I wasn't all here, um.
Can I see the language?
Who, who services the fire and, and police? And there's no conflict of them coming up through that other drive?
Well, it happens on Dudley now, you know, potentially.
According to um.
Scott?
Dave Litchwell, uh, he didn't have an issue with it at all.
No, and, and to get to Dudley Road in Berlin, this end of it, you've gotta go through Hudson, um, one way or the other.
I was just curi- I just floated through my mind tonight.
The police chief in Hudson said that, you know, they would get the call, most likely they would get there first if there was an accident on Hudson land.
Why don't we do our frontage right on four ninety-five?
Regardless, if, you know, if there was an injured person, they would service them immediately, but if it was like a fender bender. And it happened on the Berlin side, they would just wait for Berlin to get there, just like they do at the mall.
See, in this case, it's gonna be on a private, you know, it's gonna be on private property in Berlin entirely.
Yeah, Hudson Fire and Safety and when I ta- I haven't talked to the police chief in Berlin, but I've talked to Dave Litchwell and he had no problem with it.
No, I just happened to think of that and I was, you know, while I was driving around.
Well, if we go to the mall and in, in, uh, at Solomon Pond, we have to go through Marlborough. And, and if we go to Highland Commons, we have to go through Hudson and, you know, so we're doing it and. I looked at a lot of case law and what you discover is that.
But that's public, that's public road, that's not private road.
No, no, there's been, there's case law in there about.
Cause they, you know, cause, cause Scott gave um Tom this big thick packet, which.
You got a copy of it, I sent it all around, I emailed them all, last time I, we left the planning board.
So, but when you go through it.
Scott an engineer?
Scott um is our, he works for Haley and Ward, um, Scott Miller. And he is, um, we use him as our resource for uh peer reviews and.
He's on the planning board in Lancaster, isn't he?
He's a, he's an engineer though.
Yeah, he's helped us for what? Fifteen years.
Did he have any problem with this?
Well, I read his note, did he say, he said more to you than he said in his note, and in his note, he said, I can't find specifics about. Frontage in another town in the, the lot, you know, that, he was, he, he wasn't as. I don't think he addressed the issue of width um from the, you know, the, the where the lot has frontage. Um, and that's where Amy, you know, said, did, you know, can we satisfy all of Berlin's requirements? And I said, we can certainly satisfy the frontage one because they've managed to create a hundred feet of frontage in Hudson. It was interesting, I, what you've done intrigues me because um, what worries me, okay? Is that, let's say that someone comes in and says. I now have a hundred feet of frontage in, in, in Berlin, for that matter. Um, even though this may only be seventy-five feet as a neck, you know? I'm just, I'm thinking to myself, if, if this is, you know, twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, a hundred, hundred and twenty, hundred and forty. You know, what you've done is create the little five-foot jog, which, you know, okay, great, but. If, if you really were stuck with less frontage in Hudson, right?
We wouldn't have a building a lot.
And they didn't, but, but I'm just saying, you could create frontage like this.
Well, usually the frontage, what we've seen in other towns is, like in Westboro, for instance. If the frontage, if the frontage doesn't afford access. You, you know, it doesn't afford reasonable access, then most towns will say, you, you know, come on, so, and, and we've seen that. We saw that actually once on Otis Street in Westboro, so.
But interestingly, if you look at the stuff that Scott gave us, they had instances in, let's say Sturbridge, that one. People could only gain access to their property through Sturbridge on a public way in Sturbridge for nine months of the year. There were three months when it was flooded and they couldn't get to it, the town said no. They challenged it, went to land court and they said, no, you can get to your lot from Brookfield, you're fine. So, public safety-wise, that seems to fly in the face of the purpose of zoning, but nonetheless. You know, the, the court held it up and then um Amy talked about a case in which. Um, there was a parcel that was, a, 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 a unit had been built in New Hampshire across the line. But its access was through Massachusetts, a number of lots subsequently were created. That eliminated all the frontage in Massachusetts for that lot. And the town of Salisbury said, no, we're not gonna pass this, cause you've eliminated the frontage for that house in Hut- in New Hampshire. And um, the court said, no, they've got access from New Hampshire. And the fact that they used frontage in Massachusetts once isn't relevant anymore, so. The, it, it can play out in a lot of different ways, which is sort of what's tricky about trying to interpret this stuff.
Yeah, we've done a, we did a, um, at least one project I know of that is on a piece of property that. The access is through Grafton, but the building itself is in Shrewsbury. And so, there's no other site access specifically, um, and, you know, it was, it was built, it's in Shrewsbury. Gets its utilities, some of those utilities come from, come from Grafton, um, you know, kind of a, kind of a similar situation here. What I would just like to understand, so the, the question is, is if this is, oh, okay.
The top, top paragraph, so, but is there a reason that. You don't want to extend the paperway into Berlin with just that small amount of frontage that you'd need? All you need is a hundred feet and then that hundred feet goes all the way to the structure. Um, instead of doing, using this approach.
So.
What do you gain?
Put together, we put together a preliminary subdivision plan, we went to Hudson and I think we came to you informally. It was.
We came to Hudson informally too.
Well, we, and we actually did the preliminary plan with Hudson, so here's the issue that came up. The issue that came up with that was, because this is so narrow and you're so close to those wetlands here. The infiltration was impossible because you couldn't, you couldn't get infiltration within, you know. Outside of fifty feet from the wetland, so then the thought was, okay, well, we'll do. We'll adopt that method and, and the name escapes me right now, but where you basically would take the infiltration required here. And you would move it onto this lot. Hudson said, no, you can't do that because in our subdivision regulations, you have to meet the stormwater requirements. Which require recharge and we could not, and the problem is by the time we could meet that recharge by gravity. It was in Berlin and then, and so Hudson said, we have no way of enforcing that you ever build that, you could never build that. And so, it was, it was just, it was turning into a logistical nightmare. Kathy had wanted to avoid any impacts to the Entwhistle property. Because they've been a tenant for fifty years and they have equipment back here and so she was trying to avoid impacts to them. But after going through the preliminary plan process and all the things that were coming up there. She went back, talked with Entwhistle, asked about just grabbing some frontage and then also for future planning purposes. Widening this neck, right now it's fifty feet. And we widened it to sixty or maybe a little bit more than sixty feet, so that a future driveway could get further away from those wetlands. And going back to Hudson, that appeared to be.
Well, Hudson wanted that too because this becomes a public street up to the Berlin line, so technically. They're plowing and maintaining a street that only services a building in Berlin. And they want, they like the idea of, they're still, still stopping at the cul-de-sac. And any driveway past that is Kane's responsibility or the other owner versus the town having the responsibility.
And, and there's no, we'll, and, so if we sign this and the building inspector says, I have a problem. And you don't wanna challenge that and you, and you don't get anywhere, um, what's the choice? Can you convince Entwhistle to give you another thirty feet if you give them an easement?
Because they have hundreds of thousands of dollars in these structures here, that's owned by the federal government.
So, I'm just saying, so you, do you have a setback issue though, cause I look at the setback now to the Hudson, to the lot line in, in Hudson. And you're, what, get fifteen feet or seven feet?
So, there's a ten, ten foot, so we meet the ten feet with this lot line.
And so, if you go ten feet to the sideline.
Here?
Yeah, can, can, eh, will Entwhistle let you use that land if you grant them an easement back onto it? So they have continued use over the same piece of land that they have now, but just that the ownership is um solid to you?
I don't think Hudson would allow it.
Because?
Because we're changing the lot again and right now, we only have thirty-six percent of ground coverage and I think you're allowed thirty-five.
Yeah, it's really.
So, it's gonna get really tight.
So you're bound up there.
I will say, it looks like, um, just.
Hudson wanna let, let, let you adjust the lot line so there's land in Berlin, so you could meet the, the coverage.
No, and the whole, the whole idea was by doing this, it's one, it's one lot, it's not like I. You know, if we wanted to do more on this property, we would have to create a subdivision control law lot to create the frontage. If we wanted more than one lot, but we don't want more than one lot, we just, we just wanna do the one lot. On the twenty-two plus acres.
And what we had done before was, the, the road came in and it was like a, we, we were gonna request a waiver from the actual paved turnaround. Which also incited some discussion, but, um, but when we put the property line bulb, if you will, here. That crossed, just from, for geometry purposes, that crossed the town line, so once we did that, we had to make sure that there was at least a hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage. So that you, you were meeting the.
You can go with a hundred if it's a backland lot. Which is what we're allowing you now, we're saying you've got a hundred feet in, in Hudson. And that's a satisfactory amount of, of frontage for a, a backland lot essentially and, and with no. You know, all the lots adjacent to it, you know, there's no, we can't say. You know, you, you can't have but one every, well, there's no others to, so, you know, you, you, to me, you're allowed.
My understanding was that the backland lots were only allowed in the residential agricultural district?
Is that, maybe, you're right, in which case, you know, all sorts of other bells and whistles go off from. Town, town council's point of view, I was, I was trying to find a door.
Um, one of the things I noticed, it appears that although it's not as um. Elaborate as this language, there is a note right under here, which I think comes straight out of the subdivision rules and regulations. Says, no determination of compliance with zoning requirements has been made um or implied and that's. That's straight out, and so I think that captured.
That may very well be happy, be all we need.
And that's right out of the subdivision regulations, so. I think that's pretty common too, because it says basically something similar under Hudson as well, so I think that's pretty typical. You know, we could certainly talk with the building inspector, but I mean, the thought would be, we're not sure.
So, site plan review doesn't come before planning board?
No, and you're right, it's only residential, so.
Either the way it is.
Yeah, we leave that language on there and we sign the plan. Yeah, so let's...
Do you want to entertain motion?
Let's look at that language just for sure.
And I don't know if we gave them to you last time. We did bring... I just wanted to make sure I did not forget to give you... These are two copies of the Form A, as well as just two copies of the notice to Eloise.
We turned it into a paper airplane and we just...
If you can get it to where that'd be... I'm not good at making them.
This, to me, looks like it's enough. Because basically, she said, "Not a determination of conformance, and this is no determination of compliance with zoning requirements. This is zoning regulations. This same has been made or implied." And we'll just, you know, add this to the record of our minutes, so... We've got that there.
Yeah, I already put it in.
Where'd she go? She gone?
No, she... I think she's using the lady, I don't know.
Yeah, we were fortunate, we were actually able to make it such that Entwhistle had the exact same lot size that it did before this. And it's a good thing, just because the pervious coverage is very close.
This area in here in Hudson, if worse comes to worse, you do have that as a site that you can swap for anything that you might have to steal over here in order to get your width and come up with your equation that you need to meet, right? Because you've got more area here than you'd have to steal from that, potentially.
Yeah, it really just depends on the equipment out there. I mean, I... We...
Because actually, that would give more setback from those existing sheds than you've got now.
Yeah, we researched this in-house, too, and we couldn't find... And certainly, this will come up later on, but we couldn't find anything that indicated that one town's dimensional requirements, unless there's a specific bylaw for it, that one town's specific dimensional requirements, say, like, trans... You know, cross that.
They can't.
They can't.
No, there's case law that people... Towns have gotten into...
Right. They can't enforce it on another town.
They can't enforce it on another town.
So, my guess, in terms of the peace and...
I wonder about how we... Some of the language of the old lays, because we've been more restrictive than other towns and kind of forced that way, although they've said, "No problem," but...
Oh, thank God you're back.
Do we have a motion?
Thank God you're back. Yes, I make a motion that we sign a plan drawn by WDA Design Group for Kane Industrial Trust dated December 12, 2019, Plan Book 807, Plan 60, 1962 Interstate Route 495 layout, Plan known as Lot 1 in Berlin. Approval not required under the subdivision control law. Not required.
Second.
And I... But I'd like us to note that we've consulted with town council, and we have a letter dated... An email dated. Where's the other part of it?
We only signing this one?
No, we've got others, too. We have to sign one for Middlesex.
Do you want the paper, too?
We have to sign one for Middlesex.
You want to finish that thought you had?
Yeah.
Make a note that the planning board has contacted town council. Email?
An email on January 27 from KP Law's attorney, Amy Quessell.
K-W-E-L. K-W-E-L-L.
K-W-E... K-W-E-S-E-L-L. And we can attach that to the...
Careful, last thing you want is a Mylar cut. I just cringe thinking about those.
Get a Mylar cut.
Instead of a paper cut, you get a Mylar cut. Oh.
Yeah, I used to work with these things a lot. Heck, that might be what happened.
No, I don't need that one, I need the other one. I already copied it down, but I'll get it done.
Do you want to put the date on the endorsement, too?
Is this yours? Who's pen is this?
That's the official.
Is that the secret stash one?
Yeah.
Now it's on film at home.
Oh, yeah, everybody'll know where it is.
We'll have to know.
And we've got the 25 bucks that we're off, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just one lot.
Thank you. This is ours, right?
You owe it to Tom, this one, too.
Oh, you do, too? Oh, yeah, yes.
Two poundies.
This is ours, right?
That's yours?
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's some comments, there's something the planning board wants to...
No.
He doesn't?
No.
Does he know anything?
I think he's just building, right?
Yeah, he was, but he was always...
Yes, I know, it's Derek. Bob Demoreo. David Green. Rodney Trias. He hasn't been up the last few times I've been up there, so I don't think he is.
Maybe not.
Yeah.
I haven't seen him in a bit.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Guess we'll be back to VBA. We never can get post community agreement.
Great, thank you. Okay, thanks. Okay, this goes to Eloise. Did you keep one, or did you fold both of them together?
I folded both of them together.
Fold them together?
Hey, I'm efficient.
Just a report, quick news. We've asked Roberta Cameron to give us estimates to water a class through a physical impact study for River Bridge, and River Bridge has agreed to pay.
Okay.
And...
What are you talking about?
Well, the idea is that a lot has changed at River Bridge, and we've done two physical impact studies over the years to try to determine what the physical impact would be. And we thought it would be appropriate to do it again, so this one...
I think they ought to build a ramp over the first rotary there, but people put it across it.
So, the first part would be looking at public safety, particularly the ambulance question. Because in our language, it was assumed that they would take full responsibility.
Because it was the CCR, so...
Yeah, and... But for the whole site.
Right.
And public safety has said, "I don't know if that's workable legally."
Right.
So that... And we're more robust than we were then anyway. So, they want to reevaluate that. And so, that's the first part they'd look at. They'd also look at traffic, because the staging of...
That certainly has changed.
The staging of, you know, the bridge is complex because the funding of it isn't... I mean, they agreed to pay for the deck and the widening, but that necessarily... There may be more to it than that, plus the pedestrian bridge. So, there may be a, you know, how do you sequence that stuff? And then the road... The whole area in front of the post office across, you know, South and Pleasant, and then up by the cemetery.
And have a look at the juncture right up above where I live.
Yeah, South and Pleasant by the post office.
It is awful.
So, that would be the second part.
Agreed.
And then general government, you know, sort of a look at what the implications would be. And then finally, in the fall, because they anticipate having 100 units occupied by September. So, the assumption is that there may be a way to determine the, to some degree, a little more accurately, the impact on schools. And that... So, the education would be the fourth part of it, and that would be done after September. So, that's being worked on. So, that's the physical impact study. I said to Walter, "Do we want to put some... An article on the warrant to put some more land that the town has that's not in ARC, in ARC?" And so, I'll bring some language for the...
Okay.
Our next meeting. And then, I think we've got some ideas of what we want to do with this scenic roads change, so I can keep playing with that. And theoretically...
Why are we going to change it?
And so, we don't have to hold a public hearing like this for a single residential lot for a house because they've got to go to the selectmen and get a curb cut. So, why not just do all of it?
Yeah, I understand.
If it involves a wall, let them go there. So, we want to see if we can arrange the language so that can happen. And then, the Center Village study, I told you about that last time. We haven't done anything since then, but...
Well, you're going to make a committee?
Yeah, I think there's going to be a small core, which would probably be the planning board and a couple of other people. And then...
I told you, I'm interested in that.
Yeah. But I think, I mean, anybody on the planning board...
Got a blunt J so he doesn't make a Disney World out of the downtown.
And then, we...
How about getting some longtime citizens?
On that.
On that, that live in that area.
Yeah.
Like Jane.
There needs to be a core committee and then a larger committee.
The next ring out.
Right, and that's... And so, what I did is, I went through all the... Well, Jake drew a circle, and it went out up Highland Pass to about to your place.
Yeah.
It went central out to Brewer, essentially, almost. It went on South Street to Berry's, and it went Linden to Sawyer's and west to the church.
Church.
And that's a circle from the center of town. It goes that far in all those directions. It's Pleasant Street down to almost Keys Road to Judy Christian's.
Right.
So, we listed all those people, all their lot numbers and street numbers, all the map and page in the assessors' records and the acreage that they own. And of course, tons and tons of them are just small, little, less than acre lots.
Like the one I live on.
So, you know, but we've compiled that.
I really think if you really want to keep some of the feeling of the people who've lived here all the time and maintained that.
That's right.
And I'm thinking like Jane Sawyer.
Yep.
Maybe Faith. You know, something like that, in that inner circle.
Because it's got, I think, oh, Brian Clemmer.
Yeah.
You know, got a business. You know, I think, you know, somehow you've got to get National Lumber involved in the conversation. I, you know, I don't know how eager they are to participate, but...
But they may not be, but they're a voice, and they should be at least invited.
They need to know that there's some conversation going on.
Exactly.
So, they, you know... So...
Joni.
Yeah, or Tom.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, but I'll email you. I just finished that list. So, it lists the owners, and you can look at that. And then, I think we could generate a list of another, you know, like, you know, 10 parties.
10 people.
Yeah. And so, you've got this core, then you've got this other group that's advisory that comes in and, you know, is able to quickly...
Or we throw things around, yeah.
And then you do some public forums and stuff like that. It's a... Essentially, it's a year and a half.
I might make it that long.
Most of it's done in a year. And then, the only other... Margaret wrote us and said CPA, Community Preservation Act Committee, because each board has to appoint somebody. And I'm willing to serve for a while, if no one else is eager, eager, eager.
I'm not eager.
I don't have enough.
So, I mean, I'm willing to tell them, put my name on for now. Because this is the... They've identified it as a temporary... It's not legal yet because... Is that right? It hasn't been vetted through.
Somebody challenged getting the town report out last year. They requested special legislation from the joint legislature and the governor, and it's been sitting there, and the Attorney General will not look at it until it gets signed, sealed, and delivered.
So, anyway...
Well, that could be a good another 10 years.
It's an acting committee, which...
I suggested that if it's still not done by, you know, mid-March, maybe we should have a special town meeting before the annual just to revote these things.
Get it through, yeah. That's all I've got.
Do you have the town report yet, Tom?
Jay is working on that.
Okay.
Why isn't he here tonight?
He's in California.
Good night, people.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.